May I have a motion to open?
So moved Papalardo.
Second, Grossman.
All in favor? Notice of this regular meeting of the Pittman Board of Education was advertised in the South Jersey Times, posted at Pearl Hall, a copy thereof delivered to all Pittman schools to be posted and posted on the district's website. Further notice was posted and filed as required by law stating that the board would meet an executive close session at 7:00 P.M., followed by the regular meeting at 7:30 P.M. in the Pittman High School Media Center. The president shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the conduct of this meeting on the grounds it violates the Open Public Meeting Act. So now we're going to go into executive session, correct?
Yes, new motion to go into executive session.
Okay, so a motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved Grossman.
Second. And I need to discuss this.
We need to disclose what we're going in for, and it's one matter of personnel, i.e. superintendent evaluation and superintendent goals and evaluation. And then we will resume at 7:30, and action will be taken following the closed session.
Alright, so we're good?
To be vote.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
You just need it all in favor.
It all in favor, all in favor?
Don't give up, because from the third episode to the eighth episode, you're gonna be hot.
Were you a... Were you a... You know who the main one is, right? Betty Fadwell. Like he was like the young...
We're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to Pittman Board of Education meeting. If we could take a moment of silence, please? Please join me in a salute to the flag.
My pledge will be to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for its six, one nation, and under, indivisible, with the end of justice.
Rose, will you please call roll?
Miller.
President.
Papalardo.
Here.
Grossman.
Yeah.
Tigby Iona.
Here.
Bolton.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Coe.
Here.
All present.
So we're going to move to the presentation portion of this evening's meeting. So if Mrs. Mickel could join us up here. Mrs. Mickel is our high school music teacher and choral director, and she is here to present to some of our students.
Just told to talk in my... Good evening, my name is Mrs. Mickel, I'm the high school choral director, thanks for the introduction. We have five students this year who have been accepted into the New Jersey All-State Chorus. They audition in April of every year for the following year, and we are extremely proud of them. Five for a school like Pittman is unheard of, because there are huge districts who have one, and we have five. So I am just overjoyed with pride for these students. Three of them already had their concert in November in correlation with the teachers convention, and two of them will have their concert this February in correlation with the New Jersey Music Educators Convention. So, we have five of them here, if you guys want to come up, we have jackets to present you with.
So first we have Gianni Capella. And the next dominant, Iris Ari. Allo Fortune. And Megan Mazzola. We have Miss Nia's, are you wearing a jacket? This is your second year in the big voice.
Alright.
Unfortunately, we do not buy you another jacket, so instead you get a really nice certificate.
Alright, before you go anywhere, I think we need a nice photo op here, over to the side. I'll have our president, Mrs. Miller, come over. I would just say, certainly on behalf of the administration, both at the central office and at the school level, and I think for the Board of Education, we are so, so proud of what you have accomplished. You're a great representative of our school district, and you're supposed to be congratulated on a great, great honor. Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm a few bars.
Okay, ready, one.
Are they good?
Are there any parents that would like to have a take a photo?
Am I good? Am I good?
We're gonna go ahead and take a brief recess, so if anyone would like to congratulate our students, and we will reconvene in about five minutes.
While we're taking any further pictures, feel free to do so.
Zoom the meeting, Mr. Crispin has presentation.
A couple of things there for the board's review. We are required to provide a board update on the HIB, it's a semi-annual report. We do this at the January meeting, we also do this at the July meeting. For the board members who have their access on their computers, you can click on there, and you will see the reports that have been submitted to the board, which the board has seen and reviewed for the past six months. I think there was just five or six instances there, middle school or high school, so our numbers are relatively low. So that's just to keep you informed. The second thing, we're gonna take a few minutes to talk about tonight, is Start Strong student performance data from the fall of 2022. I'm gonna kind of give a brief overview, I'm gonna kind of do an aerial shots of this information, and then Rebecca's here, if there's any kind of digging down deeper than anybody wants to do as far as these numbers are concerned. I think the first page that we have there is a good explanation of what Start Strong is. I will tell you that this is something that's, you know, I don't... controversial may not necessarily be the word, but there's a lot of angst in the educational community about Start Strong. So let's kind of go back a couple of years, probably it was 21, spring of 21, in which we did not have state testing. Alright, so we're back, we're at a point where the state is not administering the state assessments in the spring. Because we have a requirement, there's federal regulations that require us to do testing for students, because it's all part of the funding formula, they came out with Start Strong assessments in the fall of 2021. Little surprising for some school districts, you know, it did provide us some, some good data. It is based on the standards of the previous year, so it's very similar to the NJSLA scores in the assessment in that regard. It's a little shorter in length, which I think we did like, if you're comparing the two. So this was administered in 2021, I think one good piece of information it probably gave districts is, you know, we talked about, you know, how much students had retained, how much learning loss there had been. It kind of gave you an early snapshot of where some of the areas where students were maybe a little bit behind. So the information, given the fact that we didn't have anything from the spring before, was somewhat good. I want to remind you that here in Pittman, we have a number of different benchmarking tools that we use. The most important one for this district is Lincoln. It's an acronym, we pay, you know, a good amount for the service of Lincoln, it's a good tool. It's used, you know, throughout all grade levels. It is a great predictor of student success on the state assessments. It can be given three times a year, once in the fall, once in the middle of the year, to really kind of hone in on where students might be and what students might need a little extra help, and then once at the end of the year. So we have Lincoln, we have, is IXL, one of those tools we might also use, we have a number, right, of different...
We have a diagnostic with IXL that can help teachers differentiate in their classroom to decide where they can assign students additional skills, work based on the standards and based on each grade level, and they can go higher or meet them where they are, wherever they are.
So needless to say, in 2021, here we are, we have all these tools that we use in the district, which take time, and students are being tested, and it's time away from instruction. And in addition to that, we had Start Strong, but we understood, alright, we needed to have some assessing because we haven't spent... Thought that would be it. Well, here we are in 2022, and for whatever reason, it's still here. And we think it's because there's, you know, certainly requirements from the federal government in terms of these assessments, there's contracts that, you know, have been awarded. But this is one of those that we quite can't figure out. We had our state assessment in the spring of 2022, we got all our results, our teachers were given those results. That information can be used to plan instruction accordingly, but yet we still had Start Strong. So in addition to all of our internal, we now administer this, and it's a lot. Beginning of the school year, you can imagine, for a student coming back to school, it's a lot, it's probably too much. But this is where we are. So we're required to report out all the results, so I'm gonna again give you this, this aerial view. The information's been provided to staff, staff can more or less use it how they see fit. I think probably from the aerial view, it's a good snapshot, I think, of where we stand relative to the state, where we stand relative to learning loss, how our students are doing. And you can kind of see little snippets of areas where, okay, maybe there's some things that we need to do and take a look at. So again, the board has this, I'm just gonna run through a few things, and the community can certainly reach out to Brett Becker if you want copies of anything that we're gonna be talking about here tonight. The first page there, I think I'm... After the explanation, is on page three. And this just, you can see, divides up the results in three different categories. The percentage of students that need less support, percentage of students that need some support, and the percentage of students that need strong support. For this aerial view, I think it's the easiest, because this can kind of get a little overwhelming. We're just gonna look at that last column, those that need strong support. They're the ones we're most concerned about. So you can see that for the fourth and fifth grade, that would be all schools. I'm going down to page number four, you can see math for fourth and fifth grade. You can see Kindle, fourth and fifth, you can see Walls, fourth and fifth. By itself, it's kind of meaningless, you know, you see percentages here, you see percentages there. You're not really comparing it to anything, but when you go down to page number five, you can now at least compare it to the state, and I think you can start to get a little bit of better picture in terms of where we stand. So the first one is four, five, ELA. If you look at the last two columns, need strong support. Those are the percentage of students in our district that need strong support compared to the right-hand number, which is the percentage of the students in the state that need strong support. You can see at Kindle School, you know, our numbers are a little bit, in some cases, a great bit, lower than state, which I think is a good thing. Again, aerial shots, we can, we certainly dig down deeper than this, each school digs deeper, each teacher digs deeper. For our purposes, I think it's important for you just to kind of get a little sense of where we are as a district. So you can see that for ELA in Kindle at four, five, you can keep going, you can see math, four, five in Kindle. You can see there disparity's not as great. You can see the numbers are, the percentages of needing strong support in math are much higher, relatively speaking, than those who need it in ELA. Again, great point, something for us to dig down. We are in the process of looking at math for next year, we're looking at series. You know, it certainly indicates that maybe we can dig deeper, can implement a little bit more rigor into our math curriculum, if that's all possible, looking at resources, rigor is a piece that we're looking at very carefully. Continuing on, now you get it broken down by the two schools. You can see Walls, four, five, the first one was Kindle in math. Now we got four, five ELA subgroups, and you can now see it broken down in subgroups, you might find meeting in there. Again, you see that our subgroups, those needing strong supports, those that are a little bit far behind, are much less in a percentage basis than state. Go on, I'm keeping going, on page number eight, same thing, it's math, you can see the percentages aren't as great in math. So it's certainly an indication that math is an area that maybe we may need to take a look at, again, especially since we're looking at new resources. Continuing on, page number nine, six, eight, Start Strong. You see grade six, seven, and eight ELA. Compared to the state, we're in a better position than the state. We always want to be in a better position than the state, but you know, it's not that much of a difference. Maybe ten percentage points, in some cases, less than ten percentage points. Again, so the subgroups are there, if you want to look in the subgroups, some subgroups do much better. Female ELA do much better than male ELA. May or may not be surprised to some people, you can look at that information. Then we go to math, and again, in math, you start to see, again, the percentages, and in some cases, the percentage of students in our district for math is more than the state. We did not see that at the elementary level, but you start to see it here at the middle school level. You see it in grade six, it's close in grade seven, thirty-nine percent for us and forty-one for the state. In grade eight, it's fifty-one percent for us, forty-seven, that's fifty-one of our students in math need strong support. Compared to the state of forty-seven, alright, then you have the subgroups in math. Goes to ELA ten, so now we're looking at the high school level, twenty-one percent, I'm looking at grade nine, where our district, thirty-five for the state, twenty-seven, ten, thirty-two, so again, we're below the state where we like to be. And you see the subgroups, then we go to math, Start Strong, I'm on page number fifteen, thank you. Need strong support, there you start to see those numbers again, much, much higher than ELA. Again, indicating, again, that math is an area that we may need to pay a little more attention to. And then you see the subgroups. Before I go on, there's just a couple more pages, and you have sciences in there. Again, we've talked about this before. This could potentially be a reflection of our curriculum. It potentially could be a reflection of the critical resources that we use. And that's again, why as we look at math, we want to make sure that math, any resources that we recommend for approval align more closely with the standards, have the levels of rigor that we're looking for. But we've said this many times, and we can't emphasize it enough. The amount of instructional time that we have at the middle school level is so much less than most of the school districts in Gloucester County and probably in the state. Certainly that has to have an impact in terms of what you're looking at right here. We are probably, where it's one period, we have one period of less than forty-five minutes, right, middle school, I'm sure what the actual number is, but it's...
One extra period, one extra marking period of a math in ELA.
Which is not really... It's not classroom instruction, it's kind of, you know, a supporting...
It's just a support.
A support type, so it's every day for forty-five minutes. Some districts, we were, at one time, we were ninety, right? We had ninety-minute blocks at the middle school, and we were probably tops in the county. And now we've, because of staffing issues, I mean, to be honest here, you know, certainly that plays into this. In order to have more time, you need more staff, and that's been a challenge. You know, we're down to three teachers each of those grade levels. So that's one of the challenges we're looking at you right now. And our number one goal right now, as we work toward next year, is increase instructional time in these core areas, especially math, especially ELA, and it may result in overall more time at all subjects, depending on how we can develop a schedule. There'll be areas we may lose, we may lose some of the nice little things that we're able to offer at the middle school. But the reality is, this is really, needs to have more of an emphasis. So we're working on it right now. We're having conversations, you know, between middle school and high school, alignment of schedules or not alignment of schedules. Is there a benefit in there? How can we start, we're just gonna, over time, hopefully be able to stretch this out a little bit. Our minimum goal, I would say, is sixty minutes, right? I'd say minimum, so we're gonna shoot four, and then if we can continue to build on that, we will kind of see where that takes us. Sixty without having to add staff, somewhere in the future, if we can start adding staff and build that capacity back up, that would be very helpful. The rest there you can look at is science, you can see relatively, for the most part, in some areas, we're below, some a little bit, inching up. Subgroups in science. And then Rebecca's done a nice job of kind of indicating how we're addressing some of the learning loss issues before and after. We have a lot of monies that have been provided through the federal grants to be able to provide some, some tools right now that we may not be able to provide forever, but right now, as far as learning loss is concerned because of COVID, we've really kind of beat this up.
We added some academic support, which will assist in the... And the other thing we're looking at is as a team in ELA group, a grade span, a math group, a grade span, teachers are looking at how chronologically through the year can we offer more released practice items that are NJSLA-like or NJDPA-like, so that students continue to practice the dexterity of the technical aspects of the test on the computer. And so we've been looking at that as well.
One, one other thing, before we take any questions. Ultimately, I think we feel that Lincoln certainly is the most valuable tool we have to really utilize data effectively. What do you mean by that, right? I mean, we make a major investment in Lincoln, and I think we're working, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, we'll talk about, there's reports that Lincoln can provide us that can go to much, much deeper than kind of where we are in terms of comparing our performance to the county, to the state, to like-school districts. And I think there'd be real value, you know, for the board who wants to kind of really see this data. Lincoln would be the most valuable tool, because we're doing it three times a year, it's pre and it's post. Teachers can use Lincoln to create their own assessments, utilizing questions that's already built in there that have the building rigor that are aligned to the state assessments. And to keep you, the state is to the standards, the most important thing is the standards, that we align to the standards. We're not teaching to the test, we're teaching to the standards. So we're looking at the possibility of adding that component, yes.
Year, so we'll have more robust reports in that way created for us by Lincoln.
Yeah, we, I've had the experience of using that in other districts, and I think you'll find that a very valuable tool, just like you could compare, you know, just tonight, those percentages to the state, you have something to compare to. When you look at our numbers in isolation, it's hard to find meaning in that. But when you compare them to the county, and we think, you know, our county, we should always be above the county average, we should always be above the state average, but then maybe we can start to compare it to like-school districts that are very similar to us, kind of where do we stand there, I think that would be a good tool.
Yeah, and I mean, in our county curriculum group, we are very honest with each other, curriculum directors in the county, and we talk with each other about where our scores were, and in truth, we are in the upper half in ELA, particularly in elementary, like we're in the top three in some of our grade levels, so we just really want to be very proud of that, and some in ELA at middle school as well. And, you know, I just want you to know that we are also looking at possibly adding a resource at the middle school, a different type of resource for ELA instruction there that would maybe just give more... Just keep building on that skills practice and standards achievement, so just one other aspect that we'll be into as well for next year budgetarily.
That's our Start Strong report. Just a couple of things that are listed there, or I guess so, we have...
We'll have the first public hearing, the Pittman Public School recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. This is the first of two public comments we will have tonight. The first public hearing is on agenda items only. This is a public comment and not a dialogue between the board and the public. You'll have three minutes to speak, and it is your opportunity to comment or ask questions. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name, municipality, of residence, and group affiliation applicable. At the close of public comment, we will respond as best we can. If we do not have the information available at this time, and if it is something we can share with you, we will get back to you. Seeing no one. Mrs. Rong, do we have any correspondence?
Do not.
We will move on to approval of minute. Should Mr. Rong, we section them into the three?
No, what you can do is for the new board members, abstain on the three from December and yes to rework, so you can just vote that all on one block, and just one roll call, it's on the new members, vote that way.
I want, I'll move to accept the minutes of the Pittman Board of Education as held on the date listed below and are approved as printed, reading dismissed with, may I have a second?
Second, Grossman.
We can do all in favor?
I would do a roll call on this one just because of the number of sections.
Tigby Iona?
Yeah.
Papalardo?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain, yes to January fourth.
Farrell?
Abstain the three December minutes, approve January fourth.
Coe?
Abstain the three December minutes and approve January fourth.
Grossman?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yeah.
Moving on to the president's report, I'd like to congratulate our student representative Sophie Winters on her achievements. She's not here this evening, she was selected for the Olympic Honors Band for the second year in a row. Sophie adds this to her prestigious list of accomplishments, which include the All-South Jersey Symphonic Band and Flute Quartet Honors. And I would also like to congratulate Noah Sfizak for being selected for the Olympic Honor Band as well. In December, Mrs. Papalardo, Mr. Grossman and I were able to attend the Gloucester and Camden County New Jersey School Board Association countywide meeting. These meetings serve as an opportunity for us to continue to train, and I would encourage all of our newest board members to look at the calendar, the next upcoming meeting will be virtual, it's in February. There's a variety of topics, but these meetings count towards your different... There's a variety of topics, but these meetings count towards your different certifications that the New Jersey School Board Association offers. Our strategic planning process will begin in January 30th at 7:00 PM and I would encourage all stakeholders within the community, community. To participate in helping craft a vision for Pittman Public School District. Our district faces unique challenges and will have different, difficult choices to make. So please give consideration to lending your voice to this discussion at this upcoming series of meetings. The district has provided an email address, strategicplanning@pittman.k12nj.us. If you would like to email them to your participation interest. And I just want to take an opportunity to invite all the nonprofit organizations within our community. Such as home and school associations, athletic booster organizations, music theater, arts related organizations. Whose sole mission is to support the educational or extra and co-curricular opportunities. That are provided for students at Pittman Public Schools. To share any fundraiser events that you would like me to mention during the president's report, go forward. You can share them to me via email and our next action meeting is scheduled for February 15th, so anything kind of. After that date, we'd be happy to pass that information along.
Thank you, a couple of quick things here, our HIV report is listed there for your review, security drills are listed there for your review. Want to remind the board that at our February meeting, we will need to present a recommendation relative to the placement of first grade for next year. And take official action on that, so that will be something that we'll probably be discussing in its different elemental components at each of the committee meetings. So obviously we're looking at it from a financial perspective with the finance committee, policy perspective in terms of policies. And just make sure everybody has all the information they need so we can make a decision, we know the two options are moving first grades into the Kindle of all schools. And the neighborhood schools or maintaining first grade at Memorial and relocating some of the preschool classrooms, so that's what we were discussing, certainly any members of this community. Who wish to voice their thoughts can send to us emails or certainly come to the next February meeting, if you have any thoughts you would like to share. I would like to just follow up on a couple of things, preschool registration will be coming out soon, this kind of the preregistration, we know parents are in the process of making these decisions now and. We want to make sure they're, have an opportunity to register for our program, so we probably will have something coming out maybe by the end of this month. Just to kind of allow people to lock in, it'll include the lottery dates in which this decisions were made, we'll probably make them as early as we can in the month of February. So people know if they have a seat in our program, I would imagine hopefully we'll have enough space with the two additional classrooms to accommodate any parents who wish to. In our programs, all three year olds that are in our program this year are automatically into our program next year. So it'll be for those additional four year olds and all the new three year olds. Well, I want to just follow up on what Mrs. Norrie indicated about strategic planning and the encouraging people to come out. I don't want to follow up because Mr. Malais here tonight and he asked a question and we talked about it a little bit at the board level, that's an important one. Because we know that Terry Lewis, who's going to lead us through the strategic planning process from New Jersey School Boards. They have a process that they go through in terms of developing the goals and objectives, but these, this process is not going to focus in on the three essential questions. That we have specifically that need to get answered relative to elementary school structure, the facilities piece and the high school sustainability piece. And boards talked a little bit more about this and, you know, we kind of see a scenario in which we kind of get the ball rolling at the end of this month with strategic planning. But have the opportunity to announce to the group that there's going to be subgroups that are going to be formulated in February for the specific purpose of looking at these questions. First one is elementary structure, talked about the fact there's probably seven different options that we could be considering. We need a group of people to start looking at that structure and start evaluating the different options to make a recommendation to the board for their consideration, ultimately it's the board's decision. Hopefully sometime in the early spring of what that should be and hopefully the board can come to a decision in terms of how we're going to move forward in that regard. Because from that decision, then we need to, to determine the facilities aspect in terms of what we need to do to those facilities, whatever they may be. In order to make them sustainable for hopefully the next 25 or 50 years. And we would then have that conversation end of the spring, we even have some time in the fall to finalize that. That decision gets finalized, it's given to architects, architects get it to the state, we get state approval. With again, the intention of having a vote, if there is going to ultimately be a decision by this board, have a referendum sometime in the year 2024. Away from anywhere from January 1, probably through December, any of the assigned dates that the state provides for referents to take place. And then high school sustainability, which is almost a separate question unto itself, also is something we need to start relatively soon. Again, probably sometime in February, again, a subgroup specifically for that purpose. And ultimately to make that recommendation in terms of what can we do to strengthen the high school increased numbers to make it more sustainable. So we will initiate those conversations a little sooner than originally both. That's it.
We do not have our student representative report. So I will turn it over to the chairperson of finance and facilities, Mr. Grossman.
Good evening, everybody. At the Finance and Facilities Committee, we had our meeting on January the 11th, last Wednesday, some of the items we touched on. Where you want to, I know.
We're going to save that.
We're going to save that for next month, alright. Save that for next month. But I saw, I move motions one through 10 on the agenda. As written for approval.
Second, Higby Iona. Any discussion?
I would just like to highlight number nine. Okay, it's a very nice gesture by the finance committee and this recommendation in our meetings with the mayor and the work that we want to do jointly as far as the recreation grant is concerned. We will be applying for the recreation grant, we've targeted the monies that are needed to redo the tennis courts. In town here as well as the area behind Memorial School because it is probably our number one recreational field that's used. That we provide, all the other recreational fields, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, you know, here and there for the most part, but for soccer, it's like a main field and it's just in deplorable shape. So we're looking to potentially add irrigation to that field so we can have grass maybe potentially grow and they'll be working with us on that. So this, excuse me, so this approval here hopefully will allow us to move forward as far as the tennis courts. With the borough handling the larger portion of the financial obligation, but this kind of making up the difference between what you had budgeted. Borough had budgeted and what the actual bid came into and given the fact that we probably use those courts more than anybody else here in the borough, so thank the board for that.
If I could, Steve, I thought the number was 23,000.
We is, I'm not sure where we.
I thought it was 22 and some change, maybe.
We can have, we can come back and amend that maybe if we need to, but at least we're getting the bulk of it hopefully. 22 and change, okay.
Yeah, we did, we discussed 22 in our meeting, so.
We'll get a number and we need to amend, we can amend.
We did discuss.
The change, we know what the change is. Sorry about that, guys, sorry to put, sorry to put the, the, the listeners on the spot. We're glad to have, we're going to make that.
Yeah.
Later date, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can give it to you, if you just give me two seconds, I will.
You could do it, I mean, the only thing.
I'm just getting, I'm sorry, I'm getting the, the bit from.
Oh, there you go.
I'm sorry.
We can round up.
And while we're doing, again, for probably the benefit of those people who are now on the finance committee, number 10 is just as important. Number 10 is probably one of the more bigger initiatives in terms of state funding, it's been made available through these ROD grants. We're approving an application for us to be able to apply for the ROD grants. One of the, to the areas that we're looking at, there is a storm water drain over here by the auditorium that creates a major flooding issue when we get rain. That has really kind of been filled in, it was never repaired, it's kind of inactive, so there's no, there's no drainage from that parking lot out. So we put in part of the grant is to fix that drain, that drainage pipe there, also repair the parking lot in that area, we're also looking. The units in the gymnasium here, the heating are kind of almost ready to go and need to be replaced. So we have incorporated that into the ROD grants, the way the ROD grant works is they'll provide the funding, but the district needs to provide 40%. We do have some monies in our capital and ma, and maintenance reserve accounts that hopefully could help us with this. But as we look at the system in the gymnasium, the system that architects would be proposing would be both a heating and an air conditioning unit, it's just an all in one unit. So it's really at this time killing two birds because it's one of the, you know, last areas in the high school that is not air conditioned, so. Those are the two major projects that we're looking at in the number 10 resolution, you have a number?
It was 72,000 even, so we'll just, contribution of 22,000.
You can just, yeah, move to amend it 22.
I moved to amend item number nine to 22,000.
And just because you're amending, you just need all in favor and then just do a roll call to approve. And if I could just say one more thing, because I, I know the question comes up in terms of, you know, $20,000 is a lot of money, it's a lot of money to a district that's, you know, had some financial challenges. There are monies that are set aside in a couple of different ways, you know, through board actions and through state funding, they can only be used for one time sources. This is one of those, this is not, there's a monies that we have set aside that cannot be used to cover current expense, it can't be covered for salaries. And this would be the proper purpose for that, so. I don't want anybody to get the idea that this is enabling us not to be able to provide what we need for our students, it's. One of the ways our capital and maintenance reserve counts have to be used. That's good, so we're good there?
Higby Iona?
Yes.
Papalardo?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Grossman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, motions carry. And so now we'll go to curriculum and instruction and I'll turn that over to Mrs. Papalardo.
So we had our first meeting with our two new committee members on January 11th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And I'm looking at the agenda, number one is student statistics, so I would like to make a motion to approve items two to 17 as written.
Any discussion? Anyone from the board? May I have a second?
Second, Poe.
Higby Iona?
Yes.
Papalardo?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Grossman?
Yes.
Miller? And now we have communication and policy and I will turn that over to Mrs. Higby Iona.
The Communication and Policy Committee met on. January 11th at 5:00 PM, members of that committee are myself, Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Farrell. Talked about a number of things and I would like to move to approve item one.
Any discussion? Up from the board? Higby Iona?
Yeah.
Papalardo?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Grossman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
This takes us to our second public hearing, this is the second public comment, so you state your name, municipality of residence and group affiliation of applicable and limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move Papalardo.
Second, Bolton.
All in favor?
Good meeting, y'all.
Our next one, the speech meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 5th, the Pittman High School meeting.